To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minister Dankert, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steam.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Item number one, we have a mo- we need a motion for adoption of the agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Just a second.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number two is a motion approving minutes from December seventh, 2020, and truth in taxation minutes from December ninth, 2020. We need a motion.
So moved.
Just a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number three, under the recognitions and awards, I'm going to read this, city employee retirement recognitions. Do we, it's going to be Terry Corkill, and Terry started with us from January twenty fifth, two thousand five to twenty twenty, uh, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, Mike Getz, these are all, okay, Mark Getz, from June eleventh to ju- uh, ninety to June eighteenth, twenty twenty, parking wrecks and forestry, same one was part, the first one was parking wrecks too, right Randy? Okay. Mike Getz is June eleventh, nineteen ninety to June eighteenth, twenty twenty, parking wreck and forestry, Gene Steinbrink, uh, April tenth, nineteen eighty four to July thirty first, twenty twenty, library and the police department, and Darla Tufti, January of ninety seven to December of twenty twenty, library. I don't think anybody's here tonight. Uh, Randy, did you want to say anything about these guys, or you don't really need to? Okay, well, there are retirees. We're not going to have a food plaque presentation because Trish can't make it, and Human Rights Commission, Sarah Kerke. Sarah, are you with us?
I'm with you on Zoom, and Obama is there in person.
Yes, we have Obama.
All right, well, council and mayor and city staff, thank you for having me tonight. Um, we're very pleased to be able to honor you, um, with the Human Rights Commission's Twenty Twenty Human Rights Award.
Well, thank you.
So during your long tenure as mayor, um, you've really undergone a transformation to learn more about civil rights and human rights and become an outstanding advocate for human rights. Um, we really appreciate all the work that you've done to make Austin a more welcoming city, including all the proclamations for welcoming week, um, the strategic welcoming plan, and developing policies and programs like honorary city council. And we really appreciate your leadership on that, and also how you've come to embrace the many communities that make up Austin. Um, we have people here from all over the world, some of whom have fled human rights abuses, and they now feel welcome in Austin, and it's no small feat, and we really appreciate the extra efforts that you make, um, to celebrate with Kearney communities and West African communities, South Sudanese Independence Day, and, um, even celebrating Constitution Day for new citizens. So we really appreciate all of the work that you've done, and are congratulating you on this award, and proud of your legacy of leaving welcoming for the city of Austin. Obama?
Mayor, um, city council, um, I'm here on behalf of Human Rights as Chair Sarah said, we just want to thank you for the work that you have done, and, um...
Obama?
Oh. Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Tom, city council, um, I just want to say, I'm here on behalf of Human Rights Commission, and as Chair Sarah said, uh, we really appreciate the work you have done. Uh, I was going to say some few words, but because of time, I will just say some few words only. I just want to say, uh, five years ago, when I came to the city hall here, I didn't know if, uh, today now I would be here as city council elect, if because, if not because of you, Mayor Tom, um, I, my dream would not come true. I just want to say, you as a father, as a friend, you have changed the image of Austin, you have changed, you know, everyone from every corner in Austin. You make every refugee, every immigrant, every native Austin here feel welcome, and the city now is so beautiful is because of your leadership and all the city council that are around you. Uh, your legacy will remain as a new city council elect, even though you're, um, retiring, we will still call you at midnight. Uh, Mayor Tim will call you at midnight if he has a question.
Ten o'clock.
I will, I will be calling you at twelve AM if there's something come up, so just know, uh, you are not leaving, but you're still with us, and we appreciate your work and everything you do for the city of Austin. Austin is more welcoming because of you and all the people around here, and a lot of refugee, uh, in the refugee camp, they know your name now, because every time I post something, I'll be, this is Mayor Tom. Some, I believe some people from Kenya already contacted you, uh, to do some activity. So we will keep your legacy and moving forward to make Austin a better city, uh, that will compete with the Austin, Texas. With that, Austin is the best. Thank you.
Well, the only thing I want to say, Obama, it's because of people like you, that this job is worthwhile. I mean, you're, you're something I'm going to take away from this job, and I'm going to know I had a, a little bit of a part in helping you along when you started, and that's going to carry me for a long ways, and, and like you say, I hope you do stay in contact, and, and once this fiber stuff is over, we can do, we'll see, you know, we'll have you over or something.
Thank you.
But we're not done yet. You can keep me up on council affairs. Well, thank you, and Sarah, thank you also. And of course, you know, the thing is, the trick is always to have good people around you. You know, you, when you're the mayor, Steve, you'll find it's, you have good people around you, and they do all kinds of good things, and everybody's telling you, the mayor, to take credit for all the good things, and, you know, I wasn't used to that before, but you have good people, we have excellent department heads, we have excellent people on our committees.
If you want, you can do the food drive thing where I'm out there.
You have good people, let's blow it with that.
The Human Rights Commission plaque is here, and that, that's left in city council chambers.
Yeah.
And it's back there on the wall, and you might want to show him the plaque where his name's on there in the bottom.
Your name's on this, so, uh, my cameraman will come and take a picture, and I will hand it to you.
I want a cameraman. Yeah. I got one just like this at the police department, right shot. Okay, excellent. Excellent. Obama, you want, you take that with you, right?
No, me.
We'll put it right there on this council wall.
Oh, okay. Excellent.
It'll hang there forever.
All righty. Well, thank you. Moving on.
I can, will we take it from here, Tom?
What's that?
I'll take this one here.
Oh.
It's my honor as a, as a city council member to present, uh, outgoing Mayor Tom Steam with this proclamation on behalf of the city council, city staff, and actually all the citizens of Austin. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas, Thomas A. Steam was elected as the mayor for the city of Austin in November of two thousand six, and whereas Mayor Steam has an extended service as the mayor of the city, and has been the longest-serving mayor in Austin's history for fourteen years.
I like that.
And whereas he has been a stalwart in keeping up on the annual infrastructure projects, and has been part of over forty-three miles of reconstructed roadways, and whereas he was a leading advocate to address the city's largest blight, which was holding back economic growth, with the beleaguered Oak Park Mall that ultimately paved the way for redevelopment of a new grocery store and other retail growth in the city's highest-valued retail corridor. And whereas the mayor has been supporter of protecting our environment by extending municipal sewers over one thousand acres and nearly two hundred homes, by annexing these various areas to address failing septic systems, and thereby protect water quality, and whereas the mayor has been an advocate with two governors, two commissioners of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, our local legislators, and other key legislative leaders for funding to advance a new seventy-five million dollar wa- wastewater treatment plant in Austin to serve as, through service for decades to come. And whereas the mayor has been a critical leader in adopting a rental housing ordinance, minimum property maintenance code, and nuisance provisions, which protect our tax base, protect those in unsafe housing conditions, ensure the preservation of our housing stock, and keep our neighborhoods strong. And whereas the mayor has been a great facilitator of community improvement projects like the New Austin Community Recreation Center, Dog Park, New Interpretive Center at the Hormel Nature Center, numerous park improvements, and whereas he has a unique ability to understand the perspectives and give voice to the constituents of Austin. And whereas Mayor Steam served as a longstanding board member of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and most recently as its secretary, serving in vital, the vital interest in protecting the interests of rural Minnesota cities. And whereas diversity has been a growing reality in our community, and the mayor has served as a bridge with our long-term constituents to those who are new to Austin's, always encouraging Austin to be a welcoming community. And whereas Mayor Steam always worked to keep a responsible budget that did not delay difficult financial decisions to the detriment of city finances. And whereas Mayor Steam was instrumental in keeping Austin Police Department and Moore County Sheriff's Office in the same downtown facility, keeping a strong working relationship between these two law enforcement agencies. And whereas Mayor Steam was a strong advocate for Phase One and Phase Two of the Hormel Institute that added fifty-two million in improvements and two hundred and twenty-five jobs to the community. And whereas Mayor Steam supported community projects such as Vision Twenty Twenty and relocation of the Spam Museum to the downtown, uh, which will help keep our community vibrant. And whereas Mayor Steam, being a former detective with the Austin Police Department, understands and supports all city staff in a strong partnership to serve the people of Austin. And whereas the mayor has had strong support from his wife Sarah and family. And now therefore be it resolved, we, the common council of the city of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim as follows: Our significant appreciation of Thomas A. Steam's unfailing commitment to the constituents of Austin, and your commitment to public service to always make Austin a stronger community. Uh, it's my honor to present Mayor Tom Steam with this plaque for the service to the Austin area from, from January one, two thousand seven, to December thirty first, twenty twenty, as the mayor of the city of Austin, respectfully presented by the city council and the city of Austin staff.
All right, thank you. Well, there's no way I can get a resolution.
As someone that served alongside you for those fourteen years, Tom, well deserved, very well deserved. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, no way I can answer that. I just, it's been my joy, the city of Austin, it's turned out to be my life. It wasn't planned that way, but, uh, when I became mayor, I just thought, I didn't have an agenda, I just thought we should run the city smooth. I knew the county and the city had, were at odds at things, and we kind of fixed that, and it's, it's just been a pleasure, but, uh, like I say, when I started, I didn't, I didn't love the city. I love this city now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I, it's because of the people, it's because of the people here, and it's because of the citizens, so, uh, yeah, I've changed quite a bit, uh, for the better, and I'm indebted to the city and to everybody here, so thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Tom.
Let's move on.
Motion to approve the proclamation?
I'd make the motion to approve that proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I hope we're done with all the nice stuff about me, and we can move on with the meeting now. I'm not that great. Okay, number four, we need a motion for the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number five is a resolution under public hearings, a public hearing and a five-year capital improvement plan. Uh, Tom?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a public hearing. It's for the capital improvement plan for the years actually twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. The plan proposes to spend a hundred, just over a hundred and fifty-five million dollars over the next five-year period, highlighted by almost half of that going to the wastewater treatment plan improvements. Again, this is a public hearing, but this will allow, if approved, council or staff to work on the twenty twenty-one projects to get them done, and give them direction on the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five projects as placeholders to do some planning. So again, this is a public hearing.
Council, any input, comments? If not, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody present that wishes to, uh, speak on this issue? If not, we need a resolution for number five.
So moved the resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a resolution under bid opening and awards, receiving bids for twenty twenty-one tree service. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as per request, we've opened up for bids for tree services for the city of Austin for twenty twenty-one, and we received two bidders, and they are both listed for you in this packet.
Okay, so, do you have a recommendation? Are we going to be voting on a bid tonight, or is, is this just information?
There is actually a low bid in here, and there's a request to, to accept a low bid.
Council, do you have any comments or anything on this? If not, let's have a, have a resolution.
Yes, if I could.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Councilmember Austin.
You have a question, Jeff?
I guess I just wanted to comment. I, I just think it's kind of interesting that even though, um, I guess I do have a question. Um, I noticed that, uh, there's hours of work specified in both of the bids, uh, or given in the bids submitted. Um, were these hours, um, specified by us when we requested the bids, or is it just a coincidence that both quoted, um, the same specific hours?
We noted in our specifications what our typical shop hours are in terms of if they wanted to store something on shop grounds, uh, but aside from that, we were looking for bids to not be inclusive of overtime or travel time, just a typical eight-hour workday, if that is somebody's typical day. If somebody wants to work beyond an eight-hour day and doesn't include overtime, that's up to them.
Okay.
So I guess we're getting roughly twenty-four hours worth of, uh, or twenty-four weeks worth of tree trimming and removal and stump removal services when we had fifty-two weeks to prior years?
I don't know, we're waiting for an answer, or?
I guess that could be just a statement. Um, you know, I guess doing the math, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred hours of service that we normally get, like two thousand hours worth of service in a year, um, just a comment.
Personally, I always liked the tree trimming in the city, uh, but let's, let's try something different for a year. Okay, so, I'm sorry, what number am I on?
Number six.
Number six. Okay, so we have a resolution for six. I'm probably on the low bid, I guess.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six one, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is a resolution approving the tax levies for twenty twenty-one. Tom?
As required by statute, the city's council is required to, um, pass a resolution authorizing the tax levy for the upcoming year. So for twenty twenty-one, we're proposing a tax levy, levy of seven million, four hundred, thirty-six thousand dollars. That's four percent higher than the payable twenty twenty levy. This was approved unanimously at the truth and taxation hearing on December ninth, and we'd request approval of such tonight.
Council, you have any questions or comments? We worked pretty hard on this. It's our masterpiece. Uh, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a resolution adopting the budget for twenty twenty-one. Mr. Dankert?
Similarly, we're required to adopt a budget for twenty twenty-one as discussed at the December ninth truth and taxation hearing. We have a proposed budget to start next year at thirty-six million, four hundred, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, and we'd request approval of that based on the unanimous recommendation at the truth and taxation hearing.
Need a resolution for eight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Nine is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of certain ad valorem tax levies. Tom?
Finally, for twenty twenty-one, we need council to, or we would request council approve a resolution canceling certain tax levies under bond issuances that were done for the Austin utilities. The city council has the right to charge a, uh, debt service levy if there's not sufficient funds to make the bond payments for the utilities to faci- utilities to facilities. However, the utilities rate structure includes enough revenue in there to make those bond payments, so we just need council to approve a resolution to not add those taxes onto the citizen's tax levy.
Any que- questions or comments? Not, we need a resolution for nine.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution granting twenty twenty-one licenses for sale of hard liquor on sale, Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale, and three-two beer on and off sale. Ann, are you here? Ash is.
I'm here. Yes, this is our annual resolution for our liquor licenses for the on sale and the Sunday on sale. So, uh, we would request that you would pass this at this time, um, with the understanding that council may want to have a conversation, um, about some corations or something based on the shutdown. I understand that. Um, but we need to do this by the end of the calendar year, so once they can operate into twenty twenty-one, we have them ready to go.
Thank you. Questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Count, uh, Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a motion adopting a policy for the donation of surplus equipment. Craig?
Uh, thank you, Mayor members. This one's, uh, applies to nonprofits and donation of surplus equipment. It's a policy and adopted by motion. Our second one is an ordinance for disposal of excess personal property, and the procedures that we would go, our focus is to transition to more of an administrative approach to some of the items we've had on council agendas that have been fairly trivial. Um, first one we'd like to ask approval for is donation of surplus property.
Council, you have any questions on that? If not, we need a motion for eleven.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Twelve is, uh, motion and ordinance reviewing an ordinance for the disposal of excess personal property. Craig, do you have anything else?
Uh, nothing in addition, Mayor.
Council, you have any questions? If not, we need a motion for A, for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And B is an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Same thing for thirteen, reviewing an ordinance, amending a vacant property ordinance. Holly?
Uh, Your Honor and council members, uh, this adds definition for unoccupied building to our vacant property ordinance, which is on any building not occupied consistent with its primary intended use for a period of a hundred and twenty days or more. This just clarifies that the vacant property ordinance includes unoccupied buildings as well as hazardous, uh, and dilapidated, or, and obviously dilapidated properties. Um, and that's it. And then the rest of the ordinance is just, uh, clarifying, uh, how unoccupied building fits in.
Council, you have any questions on twelve, or what are we on, thirteen? If not, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there?
Second.
Okay. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And then B for adoption and publication of the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fourteen, same thing, reviewing an ordinance repealing sections 6.51 and 6.52. Anne?
Yeah. As I stated in the memo, these sections would be removed because of the right-of-way ordinance that was passed. So we would want to remove the concrete contractor and excavation contractor, just because they're superseded by the new ordinance that was passed at the last council meeting.
Any questions, council? If not, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Councilmember Pashusta?
Aye.
Aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
And fourteen, B for adoption and publication of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a resolution setting positions and wages rate, wage rates for seasonal, temporary, and part-time positions not covered by a labor agreement. Trish is not here. Craig, would you like this?
Trish is here.
Uh, she's, she's on Zoom. Yep.
See, other Trish didn't make.
I am here. Good evening, mayor and council. This is an annual resolution that we passed setting wage rates. This would be for 2021 for seasonal, temporary, and part-time wages. There was an increase in the minimum wage starting January first, so this does incorporate that as well. And then working with the department heads for a couple of positions, wage ranges were adjusted slightly. But then again, this is just an annual resolution that we passed. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? If not, we need a resolution for, what, fifteen or sixteen are we at?
Fifteen.
For fifteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is a resolution ordering a feasibility report for the 31st Street Southwest Road Alignment Project. Mr. Lang?
We're working to develop a joint city-county project that will involve the realignment of 31st Street Southwest, and the first step in that is requesting a feasibility report from the council.
Okay. Council, any questions? If not, then we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Seventeen is a resolution approving a farm lease with Luke's Food and Anderson Farms. Mr. Lang? Steven?
I'll take this one. The city owns multiple parcels around the community, and some of those are required to be left vacant like parcels around the airport for our runway protection areas. But we can lease those out for farm leases. And in this case, we've been working with Loax Farms over recent years for what we call the Anderson parcel. So in front of you tonight, we have developed a three-year lease for '21 through 2023. In the amount, it's 32 acres, and total amount is $175 per acre each year for that three-year lease totaling $16,800. The city does pay, when we earn money off of city property, we have to pay property taxes. So we do pay property taxes on these parcels. And in 2021, that would come out of this rent payment because the city would pay those taxes. We estimate those to be $1,650. But we would recommend this three-year agreement with Loax Farms.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for seventeen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Eighteen is a motion authorizing the third and fourth quarter financial support payments to the Austin Community Recreation Center. Kevin?
This is the, so the rec center can continue with the construction of a building, as is noted in the information that's provided in the packet here. I'm sorry, I'm looking at, at the letter which I provided in the council packet, not the information which you're asking. But this is the annual support and the amount of, the dollar amount which is within the lease that we have with the rec center. And they have a need for this, these dollars, even though they are not open to the public for other services at this time.
Okay. Council, any questions? If not, we need a motion for eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. And probably my final motion is nineteen, approving the following appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions. And I am not reading these. Everybody should have them in front of them. They're extensive. Any questions? If not, we need a motion for nineteen.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Epstein.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you. Any citizens here or on Zoom that want to address the council on anything, anything? If not, is there an honorary council member here? I don't see him. I can't see anyone.
Can I share something?
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Lane.
Hi. Mayor, you've done just a tremendous job in serving Austin, and we are so appreciative of all that you've done and look forward to continuing your role in the community in a different venue, but know that you'll be very active. And so thank you again for all that you've done for Austin. I'd also like to thank Laura Helly for your service on city council. You've done a great job in helping serve the city as well. And to all of you on the city council as well as the department heads, I want to thank you for acknowledging the request from the business community to look at keeping taxes down. It's been a very difficult year, and we certainly appreciate your help and support in helping to keep our business community strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lane.
And Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Thank you. And we've been driving around every night looking at those houses. I think we've got it down to about three or four, but there are so many people with so many beautiful lights in town. But we'll get that for you in the next couple of days. Anybody else that wants to address the council on anything, not on the, anything? Okay.
You had on off now the timer? Did we get the other?
We'll go around afterwards.
Okay. I'll wait.
Um, matter of fact, we'll do that right now.
Councilmember Baskin.
Yeah, just two quick things. One is wanted to say a special thank you to the first responders. I know that, you know, obviously your jobs are never easy. The last particular couple of weeks have been, you know, very challenging. So know that we appreciate what you do, we support what you do, and we will continue to do that. And our thoughts and our prayers are with the families that are impacted, as well as the people that certainly, you know, work on the issues that are impacted. And then secondly, just wanted to thank Councilwoman Helly for her service to the community and thank the mayor for his service. You know, Tom, I've obviously known you for a while, and I appreciate everything that you've done for the city and appreciate, you know, all your advice and mentorship and, you know, learning over the last couple of years here. And, you know, we will miss you. You know, we've got good faith in our new mayor coming in, but we will definitely miss you as well. And just thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Helly.
Well, as we've been alluding to, this is my last meeting as a councilperson. And of course, you know, I'm going to say a few words. Even though the mayor likes to keep his meetings short, the last four years, I've been doing my best to extend them by a few minutes here and there. So I got to keep up the tradition.
You've raised my blood pressure exactly four points at every meeting. But that's okay.
So I got to thinking, sometimes when we're at these meetings and we're doing vote after vote after vote, and some of them seem really familiar, like, didn't we vote on this study? Didn't we award this bid? Didn't we already do this? And oftentimes, it feels like routine, and things are very much the same. And particularly this year, 2020, I think, has been a slog for all of us in every facet of our lives. And you just go to bed some nights and wonder, is anything really different? Are you really making a difference? And so I sat down and thought about the things that the council and the city has done in the last four years. And it's pretty impressive. It's, we passed the rental property ordinance for safer rental housing and to improve everyone's property values. We went through the comp and class process. I think I'm probably most proud of knowing that we're paying our employees what they're worth, as painful as that has been. And you guys will continue to deal with the pain. But I just will never apologize for making sure that we are being fair and making sure that we're paying people what they're worth. We have implemented the honorary council person program in the last four years. The Fourth Avenue Fest was established. And with, as soon as COVID's over, I'm sure it'll come back, the new culture and arts commission was established, a new unit of government that can strengthen our arts community and access funding that others can't. In the community at large, other things have happened. The Community Connect event got started and is thriving. Here's a list of businesses that opened in the last four years. I remember when I was campaigning, people talked to me all the time about wanting more retail and more business in Austin. Here's my shortlist. I'm sure I've missed some. Rave Nutrition, Launch Co-Working Space, Real Deals, Angry Hog, Gravity Storm, Austin Area Minority Business Project, All for Dogs, Marshals, Shoe Sensation, Pet Supplies Plus, Hobby Lobby, Ashley Home Store, Superior Cannabis, Daisy Blue Naturals, Pet Authority, 1910 Fresh Kitchen, Austin Community Recreation Center, Cabblestone Hotel, Gentleman's Bay, and Qdoba. But you know, more than that, more than milestones and accomplishments, the work of the city that we all are doing, employees, elected officials, citizens, and residents, it's the day-to-day moments of your life. That's what the city does. When you drive down the street, when you walk down the sidewalk, when you flush the toilet, when you take your kid out to get some fresh air at the park, when you get a book from the library, when you get your questions answered by the city clerk, or the parking rec department, or the zoning and planning department, when you move into a new apartment through the HRA or through a private landlord, and you know it's going to be safe for you, when you get help after a car accident, when you vote, when a loved one of yours is rescued from a fire or from the water, or when your family is treated with respect and caring on the worst day of their life. That's what we're all doing here. Each and every one of us are making Austin Austin. So it has been an honor to serve. I really appreciate working with each and every one of you, and you know I'll be around. So I'll see you out in the community.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura.
Councilmember Waller.
I just want to echo Jason's comments on the law enforcement. The last couple of weeks have been really rough, and I really do appreciate everything that they've done for our community. And I also want to thank the mayor for his service and Laura Helly for your service as well. You both will be missed on the council. Thank you.
Councilmember King.
Uh, yeah, like everyone, I certainly appreciate the law enforcement and Austin Fire in the last week. They've had some, boy, talk about heartache and unusual situations, but they've, they've done a great job in their response. And that's all we can ask is that, you know, we generally have not figured out a way to prevent bad people from doing bad things if they have bad intent. But the only thing we can do is, is react to it in a way that makes the citizens feel comfortable and a little safer. And Austin Fire and Austin PD certainly has responded and put up a response. And the community of Austin has certainly responded to that family, the Rodriguez family as well. So the city should be proud. I know they're getting a lot of support, and we hope that that can continue for that tragic situation. Mayor, it's been awesome working with you. I've had 12 great years. It's been fun sitting next to you in the work sessions, the comments that you make. It's, there's never any issue that, where Tom is on an issue. He will absolutely bear it on his sleeve and tell you, and you don't have to guess where Tom stands. Also, you provided a lot of fun along the way, so I appreciate that. Laura, you know, I can't, I can't imagine, I know as passionate as you are of public service to, to mentor Obala and step aside, clearing the way for, still had to have an election, but clearing the way for Obala, knowing what diversity on this council and diversity in this community means to you, that was exceptional. And a lot of folks, I don't think, would do what you did. So kudos to you and good luck with the county commissioner race that you were in. Also, on behalf of the council, I learned earlier this morning that Craig Clark's dad passed away. Send condolences, Craig. Sorry.
Thank you, Steve.
Councilmember Pashusta.
That's one thing I won't miss is going after Steve on these things, because he always says everything I wanted to say. But anyway, I'm going to say it again, probably. First, I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to the members that are leaving. Laura, you are the queen of analogies. I think you always will be. I will miss hearing those, and I wish you the best in your run for commissioner. It's been a pleasure working with you. I've learned a lot from you as well. Mayor Tom, you're kind of the king of no filter, I guess. I appreciate your honesty and your transparency. You are, you know, what you see is what you get with you. And there's just nothing phony about you. I appreciate everything you've done for Austin, and I just wish you a great retirement, although I know that you will still be very active. I want to warmly welcome our new council members, Obala, Obala, and Mike Posma. I'm sure that you will find that even though there's times of disagreement, we are a tight-knit group. We come together and we respect each other's opinions, even though we might disagree. Although with Obala on, now I'm going to have to step up my clothing game, I think. I don't know.
Shoes, you got to keep your eye on your shoes.
Up there. I want to welcome Steve King as our new mayor, and I wanted to say that I might or might not miss having you sitting next to me during the meeting. I'm too lucky to have you, though, Steve.
Thank you.
And I want to thank all city employees, with the exception of Don Conlinson, as always. I have always been, and especially now in these last couple of years, just so impressed with all of the people that I've met and learn their jobs and routines on a daily. I know that each and every one of you work tirelessly to get everything taken care of for us, and you still get the recognition and the thank yous that you deserve. A lot of the jobs you're thankful, but I want you to all to know that we do notice your hard work, and we do thank you. And finally, the Austin community for just supporting the city council during a really, really, really rough year as an individual and as a council. We've had to come together to make some really, really tough decisions. So thank you to the community. And finally, I want to express my sincere condolences to Craig Clark on passing of his father. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes, Laura, it's been fun working with you. I remember driving up to the cities with you four years ago for our weekend orientation and education. And got to know you a lot better, and it just seems like it was yesterday, but it's been great work with you and will obviously see you around the community. Tom, it's been, I'm glad I got elected. When you were mayor, you right away showed me, you educated me on some things. I knew right off the bat that you were honest. You were forefront. You, there was nothing about you that was phony, as Joyce said. You laid it out there. We know how you felt, and you helped me along and educated me. And I appreciate that, and I thank you for the time with you. And as well, Craig, I am sorry to hear about your father and our courage with you.
Thanks, Paul.
Councilmember at large Austin.
First of all, I'd like to express my condolences to Craig Clark and his family from the loss of his father. It's a, it's a big loss, hard to take. Secondly, I'd like to thank Laura Helly for her dedicated service the last four years. Thank you for serving the citizens of Austin. And Tom, Mayor Tom, we were both elected 14 years ago. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve beside you, see you grow over the years, accomplish all the great things that we mentioned in the proclamation tonight, along with many and many others along with many and many others that weren't mentioned. Uh, you leave very large shoes to fill, probably never will be filled again. Uh, thank you for your service, um, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you around. Also to our police department, the Moore County Sheriff's Department, uh, thank you for your thankless service. You have been here for the community, even more so in the last several weeks and months. Uh, 2020 has been a tough year for all of us, but especially demanding and wearing on you. And you guys have come through valiantly and bravely through it all. And speaking hopefully for the whole community, we appreciate your service more than we can say. You are, you are in our hearts and our minds. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, Steve, you get the last word.
I get the last word. I always get the last word. Well, first of all, I'd like to say the lights, if you, if people haven't been around town, the lights are absolutely fantastic. Everybody has them this year. I do want to applaud the police and fire department on their behavior during our, what was really, uh, a very horrific event over the last week. I know, talking to the chief, a lot of our employees were pretty shaken by what happened, uh, obviously. Uh, it's just something that, you know, the police and fire, you know, take home that we don't realize that they carry this stuff and they're going to carry that for years. And I know they're talking about having people talk to them and counseling and stuff. But, uh, I also really appreciated the candlelight event. I think our community pulled together in an amazing way for that. As far as leaving, I appreciate everybody putting up with my lack of social skills over the, over the last, uh, 14 years. I appreciate, I really liked this council. This is, there isn't a person on this council that I haven't taken something away from, you know, learned something from. There isn't a person on this council that hasn't brought something unique. And that's what I really look for in council people. We can always get people to agree with me. I want people that are going to disagree and be unique and come out with different opinions. And Laura, you'd probably win that award and that's good. That's a very good thing. You can be a little irritating sometimes, but sometimes irritating people are the ones who get things done. Just, so, but I appreciate that. And Steve, I wish you the best of luck. I'd also like to say on parting, there's certain people that I really, you know, Ann, Tom, I mean, the city couldn't run without them. I break my 14 years into two periods. Pre Craig Clark and after Craig Clark came because I really learned a lot from Craig. I think the city really started moving with Craig, uh, in there. I think he's done an excellent job. So, uh, I really appreciate his friendship. And other than that, uh, you know, thank you. This is the best thing I've ever done in my life. It's made me a different person. It's made me a better person. It's going to help me lead a better life. It already has. So, and I thank everybody involved in part of that. With that, we need a motion to adjourn. To whenever. I'm not even looking.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher. Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.